All right, now our recording has started. And yeah, our vice chair has indicated we'll wait a few more minutes before we call the meeting to order. Good morning, Sarah and Kurt. Or Moses has indicated he'll wait just until nine o'clock to start, though our recording has started. We do have quorum. We are expecting Ashley Page to join us as well, but it is nine o'clock, so Moses is entirely up to you.
Thank you, Caleb. Good morning, everybody. It is nine o'clock on Thursday, January sixteenth. And as Vice Chair Acting Chair, I am calling the City of Flagstaff Housing Authority Board of Commissioners Meeting to Order. First, we will start off with roll call. Brenda Silvius is out, Vice Chair Moses is here, Mayor Becky Daggett, I believe, is out.
That's correct.
Ashley Page.
Present.
Thank you. And Lorena Knapp.
Present.
Nadine Hart.
Here.
And Tatum Covey.
Present.
And Caleb, do you want me to call the city staff as well, or?
That won't be necessary now. We can proceed with other business items.
Okay, thank you. So Part Three, Preliminary Business. At this time, any member of the public may address the board on any subject within the board's jurisdiction that is not on this meeting's agenda. The Arizona Open Meeting Law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on an item that is not listed on the prepared agenda. Commissioners may, however, respond to criticisms made by those addressing the board. Ask staff to review a matter or ask that a matter be placed on a future agenda. To address the board on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for the chair to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Do we have any public comments either through email or live today?
I have not received any public comments submissions, nor do we have any other members of the public present today.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to item number four, approval of the minutes from the meeting of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have any discussion?
I do not approve the minutes.
Okay. Do we have, do you have any discussion you would like to have for that, Nadine?
Absolutely. Regarding the inspections every two years, I I do not agree. I was not able to voice things because I was really sick and could not attend. But I do not think that the housing authority is taking into consideration the privacy and the need to inspect houses every year. And what I suggest is if you guys think it is so easy, I would like every board member to be subject to the same inspections that we have to go through stressing tenants and stressing landlords. I think it was wrong. I do not think you're upholding HUD standards. I think that there was no reason for that. If you can do something, especially in this economy, especially with the trauma it does create, and it does, then you should do so. So I do not agree. I think it was wrong, and I actually think it's immoral, especially when you can do better and you choose not to. And I do not want to hear or entertain any excuses that you're trying to keep tenants safe from landlords. If tenants and landlords want an inspection every year, then you should allow them that choice. But you did not do it in COVID, and you do not have to do it now.
Okay, Nadine, I think that's an item to ask to have put on the agenda in the future. Right now, we're looking for just an acknowledgement that the minutes were accurate to what the meeting happened last time. And we can ask for this conversation to happen again in a future meeting agenda item, a fair item. And so I think that that's totally fair to have. What we need to do now, though, is to have those minutes either called to someone make a motion to either approve them or not, and then we can move forward with today's meeting. But in order to have that conversation, that item is not on today's agenda. So legally, we won't be able to have a long discussion about it today. But if you want to put it on the agenda again, I think we can do that. Sarah, you had your hand up for a minute.
Thank you, Chair. You covered it. The item today is simply for those that were present at the meeting to be able to review and either request amendment to the minutes based on what their recollection of the meeting is, or to approve the minutes. Moses is absolutely right.
And I understand, but it took me months even going to city council in front of the mayor to even get this on the agenda. I think it's ridiculous. It should not take almost half a year to get something that is, that that's important and continue to request on the agenda. So that's what I'm saying. Fine, let's do a future agenda, but we shouldn't be addressing this in June. That is unacceptable.
Ms. Hart?
Yes.
We need to stick to the agenda. We would actually be in violation of open meeting law if we continued to have this discussion. So
I'm just putting it out there, Sarah. I don't really care. I will unmute. I will mute myself, and we can carry on. But I need to put it out there because it's inexcusable.
Noted.
So Sarah, can we put in a fair item for that to have another discussion about that?
At the end of the meeting, when we have space for that, we'll see if the board is interested in repeating the discussion.
Okay. So at this time, do I have any other board members who would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December nineteenth as written, or would like some edits or updates or corrections to those minutes?
This is Tatum. I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Tatum. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Do we have, so all of those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please indicate by saying aye.
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 And those who don't agree, say no or nay. And do we have any extensions? Okay, so the approval of the minutes as written has been made. We have no formal action items. We will not be taking any votes on any items today. We have an informational item from Ms. Saradar about the discussion of possible voucher program extension.
Thank you, Chair. Board, this is our sole agenda item today because we wanted to give it the time that it deserves to make sure that this group understands what's being requested of us and the details of how it works, et cetera. I'm going to go ahead and try again to share in. Okay. I think that did it. Nope, that. Well. Are you seeing a slide that's?
I can, Sarah.
You can. Okay.
It says requests from HUD and City of Williams.
Thank you. All right, so what we have in front of us is exactly this. We received a request from both HUD and City of Williams to accept a voluntary transfer of Williams Housing Choice Voucher Program. I'm going to go over a lot of details today. We have been working on this with HUD and Williams for months. Not able to bring it forward and create expectation on the behalf of Williams' current voucher holders that wouldn't necessarily be fulfilled. And so we had to pin down a lot of details. So I'm going to ask that, I'm going to show you the outline, and I'm going to ask that you please note your questions because your questions are important. And it is incredibly important to all of our staff that any thoughts, concerns, questions, support, whatever it is that we hear from you, those items today. I'm going to ask that you make, that's why I'm asking you to make a note of them, is that you hold them until we get to the question part. Because we cover a number of items that are the natural questions we have been addressing, the questions we've been receiving as we work on this, et cetera. And I believe that we've incorporated the vast bulk of what we anticipate your questions being. However, please don't hesitate to ask, even if you're like, I think you said, but let's get it on the table. Let's get it figured out. I wanted to create a comment. That didn't change. Slide two. There we go. I wanted to create a common language today as we go through this. So as I talk about it, there's a reminder of folks what these individual pieces mean. So of course, Housing Choice Voucher, also known as Section Eight vouchers. We're going to be talking about the general purpose vouchers today. So if you recall, and I have some detail on this later, but we have all kinds of housing vouchers in our program. We have our veterans vouchers, our emergency housing vouchers, mainstream, et cetera. We have a number of different types. Some of those, all of the ones other than Section Eight vouchers, Housing Choice vouchers, have a designation that go along with them. They serve a specific population. The vouchers we're talking about today are general purpose vouchers. They, one, are very hard to come by because HUD has been issuing special purpose vouchers for a number of years. So they are not set aside. These vouchers would not be for any specific population specifically, rather people that are eligible for the program in general. I'm going to talk about utilization rates. Utilization means the number of vouchers that are issued or under leased. So that's, that's going to be important because it ties to the next little box, which is administrative fees. So an agency administering a voucher program does not receive the associated administrative fee with, associated with that voucher until that voucher is leased. And so that is a critical element for Williams. Our program is scaled to the point where it's, it's a dance, but it's not something that's become a barrier for us. I'm going to talk about HAP or the Housing Assistance Payment. That is the money paid to the landlord on behalf of the voucher holder. And so what's important to remember here is that the HAP money, the Housing Assistance Payment money, is restricted only for that purpose. We cannot use it towards administrative fee. And similarly, we can't use administrative money, administrative fee money to pay HAP. They are wholly separate. We cannot cross accounts between them. That's why I'm going to talk about money in those two different ways. Administrative fee, HAP, HAP to landlords, restricted, unrestricted. That's the other term. Thank you for your patience as I figure my brain out. The administrative fee is often referred to as unrestricted. It's not unrestricted. It has to be used in the administration of the Section Eight program. HAP monies are referred to as restricted, meaning they can only be used for HAP alone. And so those are terms you'll hear come up. I'm also going to talk about service area. Our current service area for our voucher program is ZIP codes eight six zero zero one through eight six zero zero five. Our service area encompasses Mountaineer and Kachina, Donnie Park area out west, et cetera. It does not go all the way to Williams right now. And so I'm going to talk about service area, and that will be a critically important component of today as well. So here's our, the outline. I'm going to talk about why Williams is in the situation they're in and what their current program dynamics are. I'm going to go over with you how a transfer works. This is a HUD specified process. I'm going to talk about transfer specific details for what we are being asked to consider. We're going to talk about money, and we're going to talk about staff. I want to talk about why we would do it. And then the conditions we would put in place of program acceptance. We have an initial commitment from HUD, some other important info, and then what's next? So really, we're being given an opportunity to serve and increase our community resources. So there are fifty vouchers total, general purpose vouchers within the Williams Voucher Program. I almost want to read this verbatim because it is so critically important, but it is of utmost importance.
I'm sorry, Sarah, we didn't get your slide advanced.
Oh, that's fun. Thank you. Okay, here's the slide outline.
Thank you.
The outline one, these are the topics I read you. Thank you for calling that to my attention. It's changing on one screen and not the other. And then this is the opportunity to serve and increase our community resources as well. Super, super, super important to note that should this be approved, the current voucher holders that are part of the City of Williams program will not see any impact beyond the staff that they work with. They'll work with us instead of with the City of Williams, but their voucher stays leased where they are. Conditions don't change. Simply who is administering the voucher is changing. And that's really important to specify upfront because we're talking about housing vulnerable individuals. We don't want to increase the anxiety surrounding this in any way. There is a lot of work to be done on the administrative side, on the backside. But the ultimate goal, of course, is that the people that are served have, see the least amount of impact as possible. And talking about people, I want to, I want to address this piece as well right up front. And that is that today I really need to talk about people and business. And I want to acknowledge right up front that we know with, with every moment that we serve within the housing community that, that when we talk about vouchers, we're really talking about households served. We're talking about the people that utilize the vouchers. We are talking about human beings. At the same time, this is a business decision. And we have an existing program. It is a strong program. It has, it has resources. It's our responsibility as a housing authority that serves the City of Flagstaff to make sure that we're able to do that without consequence to what our programs are and how they're operating. And so this is something we as staff, we consistently go back and forth with of, but the people, absolutely the people, a hundred percent the people. At the same time, it has to be a smart and safe business decision for us. So when I'm presenting some of the following information, and I sound very very, almost inconsiderate of the fact that there are humans in this equation, please know those humans are on our mind in every step, but I've got to present it as a business decision to you for consideration. And so yes, there are people, there are existing human beings holding vouchers in Williams where their, their housing is in question at the moment. We get it. We know. We understand. We honor it. Today, I'm going to focus a lot on the business side because we really have to balance the hearts and brains in the equation. So why? 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 Are we being asked to do this? So the City of Williams has just concluded after several years that the voucher program is no longer independently viable within Williams. And this is due to a couple of things, and one is the decrease in available rental units and the limited administrative funding due to the program's relatively small size. With only fifty vouchers, that equates to about sixty thousand dollars in administrative funding. And when those vouchers aren't fully utilized, that decreases that administrative funding. Their rental stock has steadily decreased over time due to, mainly due to the conversion of a significant number of their overall housing units and an even more significant number if you separate those housing units into rental and ownership into short-term rentals. We could chase a squirrel here and say, well, why can't we just tell people they can't convert? The state has preempted cities and counties from regulating short-term rentals. The state has said we have to stay out of that. And so the City of Williams, the City of Flagstaff, City of Phoenix, et cetera, did not have the ability to say, you can't. And so that has had a massive impact, even when vouchers were being issued. Folks were not necessarily able to find a place to lease. So the financial strain associated with this is, is one of the main drivers behind this. That's not reflective of the community need. Simply the program's administrative needs outpacing the realistic amount of administrative funding that flows to them for this. I want to pause for a second and mention that the City of Williams also has some public housing units. We are not talking about the public housing units at this point in time. I don't, and when I say in this point in time, I don't know if we will ever talk about the public housing units, that's something HUD is working with them on. Today, our scope is limited to considering the voluntary transfer of the voucher program. So let me put it in some context for you. And that context is that in recent years, fewer than twenty-five of the fifty vouchers allocated to Williams have been able to be utilized. This is due to a number of things, including staffing, limited rental supply, et cetera. Williams has concluded that their rental housing stock is not sufficient to support the utilization of all fifty vouchers. Williams has two hundred and fifty, their staff estimates two hundred and fifty short-term rental units, which constitutes fifteen percent of its total housing units. But that includes ownership. So they have around sixteen hundred and fifty-three total housing units. Two hundred and fifty of that's fifteen percent. If we break it down into rental and ownership, that number is, that percentage is much, much higher. So that's one of the pieces. Other current program dynamics. There have been no staff in place in Williams since September of twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, Sarah, did you change slides?
I did. If I don't look this way, that means, and it won't let me drag this screen over here. Thank you. I worked to stay on top of that. Current program dynamics, there's no staff in place. There hasn't been since the last director resigned in September of twenty twenty-three. She came on board in February of twenty twenty-three, worked to clean up. There had not been staff. Had been staff off and on from about twenty nineteen until twenty twenty-three, with the exception of a time period that Williams, along with another smaller housing authority in our state, contracted administration of their voucher program to a private entity, a private out-of-state entity. There was financial mismanagement on behalf of this out-of-state firm. There was some embezzlement from this out-of-state firm. And the other housing authority that was utilizing this firm has voluntarily transferred their program to a larger regional program under similar circumstances. So we have a model to follow. The attorney that we're talking with actually is the one that handled the transfer of, it's, it's not a secret. It's the Eloy Housing Authority is the one that transferred to a larger regional entity. So that's the other piece here financially, and also because it's ultimately, even if we as the housing authority contracts something out, we're ultimately on the hook for HUD, even though the wrongdoing was the private firm. Williams is accountable for the mismanagement of their contracted entity. And so that's not ours to mess in. It's, it's messy. I'm going to use the word messy. It's completely messy. It's been hard. It's been stressful for them, especially with, with a program so small, and their mayor and city managers continuing commitment to serve the people that are voucher holders within their community. So demographic data, oh, no staff in place, and they, the best numbers we can get right now, because there haven't been staff to update this, is eighteen to twenty-two vouchers utilized right now out of fifty. So those numbers are low. We were functioning off of the best reports we can get, as well as what we're hearing from the voucher holders themselves. So demographic data shows that all of the current voucher holders are extremely low income except for one household, and that one household, I believe, is three percentage points above extremely low income. So we're talking about households that fit criteria very well. We're not dealing with over-income households. We're not dealing with, with any of that. These would all be, except for one, extremely low-income households. The City of Williams has been paying HAP essentially out of their own coffers as some of the funds have been frozen because of this mismanagement by the outside agency. The City of Williams has honored the commitment to pay the landlords to keep people housed. And personally, I think, I think that's extraordinary. They, they don't have to. That money is not flowing into them from HUD. And they're, they're paying it to keep voucher holders housed. So what is that, the no staffing piece also mean is, means is that there have been no interim or annual certifications completed, September twenty twenty-three. I have spoken with the director that, that left in September twenty-three. And she stated that when she departed, all files were current. Everything was caught up. So it's not that we would have years and years of bringing files into compliance. We would have a very defined time period to do so. And it's important to note that all utilized vouchers are leased within Williams city limits. And so this isn't a program that goes out to Valley. It's not a program that extends out. It is only within the limited boundaries of Williams city limits. Other interesting participant data is over sixty percent of the participants are over age fifty, with half of that number being over the age sixty-five. So really, it's an, it's an older group of I suppose, a more experienced group of humans within the voucher program right now. So how does a transfer work? I click the button. It's changing. There we go.
There it is.
Yep. I'm like, I pushed the button. I did. So how does a transfer work? So there is a specific HUD required criteria. There is a HUD notice. Here are the rules. Here's what has to happen. So this is a summary of the most critical points of that without going into the, and then HUD talks about it, and then regional HUD talks about it, and then all of those pieces. So there are specified criteria, and chief to that is approval of the transfer from both the surrendering and the receiving agency. Again, this is a voluntary thing on the part of Williams. It requires approval from state, regional, and national headquarters of HUD. I have spoken with two of these three levels within HUD personally and have been encouraged by them to continue moving forward. HUD is interested in this transfer happening. There is protection written into the HUD directive of protection for current voucher holders, which is talking about they, they keep their voucher, they remain leased in place, trying to minimize impact to them to the greatest ability possible. There are some timing requirements that say that the transfers can only take place on January one or July one. Apparently, that's not hard and fast. Exceptions can be requested. Phoenix Office of HUD, Regional Office of HUD has indicated that they've already talked with powers that be up their chain of command, that we're not bound to only those two transfer dates. It might be July one. It depends on how fast the federal government works, what our opinions are, if we say yes to this, et cetera. So the other critical piece here is the preservation of leasing ability in both service areas, meaning we will become one service area. I'm gonna give you a little bit more detail on that, I think, in two slides. But that it is not that the vouchers will all be leased in Flagstaff. Ultimately, our service area would expand only to the city limits of Williams, not including any space between here and there that we don't currently serve. And then I put the summary, legal, legal, legal in because there are all kinds of legal things to comply with to ensure the rights and responsibilities of all parties are upheld and respected. So there's legal work that goes with this. So how does it actually work? Clicking, there we go. The fifty general-purpose vouchers will be added to our voucher program. There will not be a Williams program and a city of Flagstaff program. It will be a city of Flagstaff program with fifty additional vouchers within it. I mentioned that we would expand our service area to include Williams city limits. Because the rental housing stock in Williams is extremely limited, it is unrealistic to anticipate a significant increase in vouchers being leased in Williams. They just don't have the rental stock. If that were to change, they still don't have that many housing units, and their rental rates are cheaper, which would then make our HAP funding go further. It would be an option for people to lease there, it would not be like, this is a Williams voucher, you have to go lease in Williams, it's one program. So it would also expand the options for voucher holders to lease up in city of Williams should they wish to do so. I see a hand, but I can't tell whose it is.
It's me. It's me.
Okay.
So my concern, so this would be, they would so with fifty additional vouchers to our city, that means that if they can't find housing in Williams, they can look for housing here, is that right?
It wouldn't be, they could look in both places. It's not that households would have to look in Williams. It would be if they desire to live there, they can look in Williams, and if they find a place, they lease up, or someone who is currently in the city of Williams could lease up in the city of Flagstaff. It would not be separate resources, it would be one resource.
Okay, my concern, and you guys have never had to have the hardship or, what, three hundred rejections to find a house that will take my voucher? You're already, it sounds, the unfortunate thing, while it sounds like we're doing a good deed, you are now, that's fifty more people potentially, and you're gonna say no. But now looking at a very scarce marketplace, where if you look on social media on any given day, there's so many desperate people reaching out, like, I can't find housing for my voucher, can anybody help me? So my concern is that the housing authority has no intention of doing a good job explaining this program to landlords. So you're affecting the current people who need housing with vouchers by adding that potential. So
I have some information. I hear your concern, I acknowledge it, it's one I anticipated coming not only from you but from others, and I have some information built in in the rest of this presentation that will address that.
Okay, thank you.
Moving along with how will this work? All currently, and I know I keep saying this, I'm gonna keep saying it because it's very important, is that all currently utilized vouchers will stay that way, the only impact to the households is that they'll not work with our staff. All unutilized vouchers can be issued to households on the waiting list, and all vouchers will be able to be leased up in our current service area and the city limits of Williams. So I want to go over a little bit of what our program currently looks like. So we have five hundred and thirty-plus vouchers. I use the term plus because the last line, the foster youth to independent vouchers, is a number that ebbs and flows. We aren't granted a set number of vouchers. As Department of Child Safety brings us an eligible or refers an eligible client to us, we say, hey HUD, we have an eligible referral. They either approve the issuance of a voucher or not based on their funding. So that's what the plus is, is because we have five hundred and thirty vouchers right now, plus the flexible number of the FYI vouchers. So you can see our breakdown here, we have the three hundred and forty-two general-purpose vouchers. Everything else comes with an additional criteria in order for someone to be eligible for. For example, VASH. Our current voucher program right now is at a utilization rate of ninety-seven percent, meaning ninety-seven percent of all of our vouchers are either leased or folks are issued and searching. Right now, ninety percent of our vouchers are leased. We have seven percent of vouchers that have been issued and that are searching. With activities continuing, because there's that remaining three percent of eligibility interviews this month, et cetera, so we're continually moving people through. It's important to note, when we're talking about utilization rates, that when HAP is awarded, housing assistance, payments, funding, that restricted money I was talking about, is awarded to the city of Flagstaff or any program, is that they don't issue us this much money for studios, this much money for one-bedroom, this much money for two-bedroom. They give us a lump sum based on historical spending of HAP in our community associated with fair market rents. And so we are responsible for managing that, we're responsible for saying, okay, well, we have a lot more larger households, which means that we're spending more money on HAP and that balancing act of not over-issuing vouchers so that we're not overspending our allocation, but that teeter-totter of making sure that we are serving as many people as we possibly can without overspending the program. So sometimes you'll see a program that has a lower utilization rate, but their HAP expenditures are at a hundred percent, and that's that balancing act. We, because we have phenomenal staff that watch these things, have a lot of experience, we're okay with a utilization rate of ninety, we can afford it. We have strong reserves in HAP. We have a healthy administration budget due to responsible management of it. And so we're in a really good position to be able to do this. We actually have seen an increase in participating landlords in the past year and a half or so, and there are additional units coming online, apartments that are under construction that are increasing our rental stock. A number of those that have had anything they needed, a rezoning, that type of thing. The other side of our programs have been negotiating with those landlords, not landlords, the property owners to ensure, and this is memorialized and development agreements, and our other side of the house, our housing program side, ensures compliance with making sure, well, what we've been negotiating is that you will accept housing choice vouchers. So they're making a written commitment and a legally binding document that says that they will accept housing choice vouchers. And because we are preempted by the state from including income discrimination in our protected classes locally, and the state hasn't done it statewide, we have been writing that into those agreements as well, because it's a two-party agreement, we can ask, and they agree, we all sign it, that the income discrimination related often with voucher holders won't take place. Is that every new apartment complex coming in? No, if they're able to develop by right, we ask, but we don't. We don't, and sometimes they pull building permits and they just go. But if something has come to council, we've negotiated a development agreement. These are the types of things that we're writing in in order to create additional options for folks to rent. We had one complex, not open yet, who was like, oh, no, we don't, we're not gonna do that, and we reminded them of the agreement that they signed, and lo and behold, yes, they are. And so that's part of the work we're doing to open up additional rental opportunities. We do have strong interest in the creation of additional multifamily in our community with multiple additional rental complexes coming. The other component here is ADUs, which aren't appropriate for everyone, totally understand that. But the state, we were working on it beforehand, but the state has required, excuse me, statewide for zoning codes to allow the construction of an ADU accessory drilling unit, sometimes called granny flats, to allow single-family homes to construct a unit such as that on their property. And so we've been working in that direction. It's a small increase of rental units in the community, and again, not appropriate for every household, but another effort working to bring additional rental units available for the general public and voucher holders to reality. And, oh, I almost forgot, I'm fully staffed, fully staffed, I'm gonna knock on my desk, I always hesitate to type it. Sharice goes, you should mention, we're fully staffed, and I thought, okay, we're fully staffed on the voucher program side, we are. Our housing navigator, new housing navigator started last week. We have our occupancy specialist in place, we have our two housing services specialists in place. Again, I'm gonna knock on wood. Let's talk about money. There's the, we're getting, so you can see we went big and we're coming down to detail. There we go. All voucher funding from the city of Williams will transfer to us, including their current and ongoing funding, administrative funding, restricted and unrestricted balances, et cetera. And I listed it separately, but all HAP funding is included, and that is the money that is paid out to landlords on behalf of voucher holders. The addition of fifty vouchers, when they're fully utilized, will increase our admin budget by approximately sixty thousand dollars per year. And the financial analysis of our voucher program shows a healthy budget. In fact, it's healthy enough that we could accommodate administrative expenses that we are required to incur until the voucher is utilized, and then we start receiving payment per unit month on that. We could handle within our current administrative expenses that gap time period. I'm still pushing on HUD that they allocate money specifically for that. However, we do have the ability, without sacrificing anything, for our current programs to cover that. But it is still HUD's responsibility. They're asking us to do this, they're asking us to do the cleanup associated with the files and the current voucher holders. And so that's gonna require some time, and I continue to push for them to allocate funding to do that. So let's talk about staff. I do have permission to use Sharice's name, or at least she didn't say no when I showed her this slide. Is that when we started talking about this, and can we do it, should we do it, what does it look like, what are our barriers, what are our risks, all of those things? Sharice said yes. Sharice is our lead voucher staff person. She is great at her job, and she's phenomenal at her job, and she has a good sense of what it takes to administer a voucher, et cetera. She said with the condition of adding a staff person, and I completely agree. We have the five hundred and thirty vouchers, those are split mainly between two caseworkers, with the housing navigator taking a portion of the harder cases that we have. And so I completely agree with adding a staff person. We've added almost a hundred vouchers in the past three to four years without significantly increasing staff. And so the staff is there, they're doing the work, but we can't accommodate an additional fifty vouchers without adding a staff person. Now, the good news is, is that the additional administrative funding will augment the funding necessary for adding a position within the voucher program. This is kind of that tipping point, can we afford it, can we not? This is the absolutely we can. And it's important to know as well, as one of the reasons Sharice cited in saying yes, is that we're already administering limited VASH vouchers in Williams. VASH has different rules about lease-up area, and so I think our number, it's not big, but our number right now is three, we've administered vouchers in Williams in the past, and it was staff's statement that it is not an additional burden. Excuse me, and so that was the other reason. The slide originally said Sharice said yes with her head, meaning she was making a business decision about it, which made her sound heartless, it's not, she also said yes with her heart because of people. So why would we do this? It'll increase resources for our community. Additional vouchers are hard to come by, especially in this increment for a community or size. We'll have an increased service area for voucher holders to lease in. It will preserve housing resources in the area. And this is not, I am not issuing an ultimatum, I am not issuing a we have to. I'm simply stating the fact that if this transfer is not something we're interested in, or for some reason doesn't go through, then HUD is likely to claw those vouchers back, and we will lose them in northern Arizona. And I say likely, that's probably not strong enough. Because of the inability of Williams to staff up to serve them, because of the inability of Williams, not the inability of Williams, because of the limited housing stock in Williams, they're not going to transfer somewhere else, there isn't another nearby agency to receive them, and we'll lose those vouchers in northern Arizona. Again, that is not an ultimatum, it is simply a fact. So this transfer, increasing our service area, will not require daily staff presence in Williams. Sharice's estimate was a day a month, maybe, maybe two. Initially, at first, it will take more staff time as we're working with folks to bring files current, to address the interim recertifications that haven't been completed, et cetera, but the ongoing servicing of the limited numbers and vouchers is determined not to be burdensome to our staff. City of Williams has agreed to provide furnished office space and also internet connections for us to utilize while we're there at no cost. And the other reason is that, I mentioned, we've been working on this for months, partially because there are risks. And without without indication of those risks being mitigated, I wasn't willing to bring it forward. We can't risk our own program, our own funding, and who we're serving by taking on an additional piece. So most significant risks, I'll say, I could say all significant risks, all identified significant risks will be mitigated, or we don't have to accept the transfer. So, conditions of acceptance. We will be held fully harmless, both programmatically and financially. I mentioned that there are some sanctions with the city of Williams, those will not transfer to us. Any debt that they have will not transfer to us. Any programmatic findings will not transfer to us. The other piece of being held harmless programmatically is a time period where bringing in vouchers that are out of compliance right now, or are not utilized. Our request has been that to hold us programmatically harmless, that we are given relief from our CMAP score, that's the score that says how we're doing, for two cycles, which gives us one to bring everything into compliance, and two, which will get us through, because it's not gonna be full years, so it will be a partial and a full cycle. So, and I'm gonna talk more about that in a minute. And also that technical assistance be provided by HUD to us, specifically for financial matters associated with the program transfer and the transfer of how we handle the transfer of the participant records, catching up on screenings, the leasing the catching up on screenings, the leasing requirements, et cetera. This isn't something that happens all the time. I've never done it. Um, there's only one other housing authority in the state that has. Um, and the circumstances were a little different. There's some regulation interpretation to be done. We want to be able to rely on HUD and get guidance from them in writing of how we book these things into our financial system. Um, we've requested this technical assistance to go through the next audit period. So that if there's questions that come up of how we did things, it's not us on our own, it's us and HUD saying, okay, here's what the regulation says, here is what we advised, we followed this advice, et cetera. Again, working to mitigate the uh, the greatest amount of risk possible. Um, and then the, the piece that comes with, how do we transfer records, chain of custody, um, interacting with existing landlords and residents, et cetera, and how we bring those files into compliance um, in, in a compliant way? That was silly, but that's what I mean, is like, how do we do this right? So that we're not um, jeopardizing our ratings or our scores. We have the ability to add other contingencies if need be. One of the things that I have been waiting on for a few months to bring this forward is that I didn't have anything in writing from HUD that uh, we would be held harmless. And I, I told the Phoenix office, I can't go to the board, I can't go to city council and say, you know, this guy in Phoenix at HUD said that they, they would hold us harmless. He just said, but I don't have anything in writing. And so finally in December, I got something in writing. Um, it's not as strong as I would like it to be, but their hands are somewhat also tied because the Phoenix field office cannot make a commitment on behalf of all of the chain of command of HUD. So where we settled is that, and I'm gonna show you the language in just a second, but where we settled was that we can put contingencies in our documents, that if these things are not in place, we don't accept the transfer. Um, so I don't usually like slides with this many words on them, but this is the actual language. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over the critical parts. The critical parts are bolded and larger text. But this letter is to confirm that the Phoenix office, in their request to HUD, they will request that we are held harmless from the impacts of performance deficiencies and HUD liabilities sustained by Williams. They'll do that when we submit documents to them approving the transfer. They say additionally, our office will request initial technical assistance for a period of six months to one year from date of approved transfer to assist us with the things I had in the previous slide. Now, I don't like six months to one year. I don't think that's gonna carry us through an audit. So uh, my recommendation would be to make that longer as a contingency. And so HUD is also balancing a number of things with this. And I think the need for technical assistance will be heavy in the beginning and less towards the end. But I still want the ability for us to access it so that we are not doing something inadvertently because this is new and not done very often, that HUD then says, why'd you do it that way? I want the answer to be, because that's how you advised us. Um, other important info, and oh, the, the previ- this slide also says HUD commitment so far, and that's because it's from the Phoenix field office. And we'd been at an impasse for a number of months of, I can't take this forward without something in writing. And HUD's saying, I can't take this forward. I can't give you anything in writing until you send us a request. And I'm like, I, I, I cannot take something forward on a verbal commitment. So now we have something somewhat in writing. Is it perfect? No. But I am comfortable that it is enough, that it is their commitment they will request. Again, I have talked to the regional HUD director as well. She has also said that hold harmless is um, is on the table as a completely acceptable condition, and they understand that we cannot accept liabilities incurred by another community. So I'm gonna go with other important info, because there's some um, things that didn't really seem to fit in other places, but are important. So the Williams Housing Authority Board is their city council, and they've already approved the transfer of the program. They've already said we are voluntarily doing this. Um, we approve transferring the program to city of Flagstaff. Um, we have mutual agreement with city of Williams that um, should this go forward, that we'll hold a joint meeting together with current voucher holders and landlords to discuss dynamics. Why, um, let them ask questions, that reads like we're asking questions, that's not what I meant, for folks to ask questions, to meet staff, to be able to create that level, to create that a, a warm handoff from one to the other. Again, there hasn't been staff in Williams. The voucher holders have been working with either the mayor or the city manager or HUD, and then HUD sometimes refers them to us, and we say, we're not administering this program yet. You need to talk to Williams or HUD. With that said, most, if not all, of the current voucher holders in Williams are at a minimum informally aware of this potential transfer to our office, because we've been getting calls, hey, I understand this is happening. There is a piece of the HUD regulation that governs program transfers that says we can't notify existing program participants until the transfer is approved. And I've nitpicked that language, one, because that's not transparent, two, these are public meetings. Going to city council is going to be a public meeting. The Williams city council meeting was a public meeting. So what I discussed with HUD being that the word is notify, not inform. And so formal notification, I agree with. It doesn't make sense to be like, to formally notify this program has transferred until it happens. But it does not make sense to not say anything, not share information, not share what's going on um, until it's done. And so I'm going, we're not gonna notify, we're gonna abide by um, the regulation. We're not notifying, but it says notify, not inform. I've got a head nod from HUD. It's a technicality, but again, humans. And so once I said this is why we need to do this, they, they understood. What's next? Should um, there be um, an indication that the board is interested in this, then we'll bring you an action item for approval.
Sarah, is there a slide on what's next?
Thank you, Moses. I don't know why it's not changing on all the screens like it should. I'd say it's Monday, but it's not. It's Thursday. Um, we'll bring an action item to the board for approval. Then we would go to city council for approval. We would send our documentation to the Phoenix HUD office. I don't know what to type here, other than like HUD's gonna talk to Phoenix, is gonna talk to Regional, is gonna talk to headquarters, is gonna talk to the attorneys. Um, they're gonna do what they do. Um, once the program transfer is approved and fi- and the finances are also transferred, then out, formal outreach, file transfer and cleanup will start. Again, that cleanup is a, is a concern, but it is not an overwhelming concern, given the limited number of vouchers um, that are currently utilized. Additionally, the large percentage of elderly households, quite often elderly households do not encan- encounter regular income changes, which means those, that cleanup is likely fairly simple. And so um, wh- I'm, what I'm also talking about with HUD does what they do. HUD has done work already as well. There was a question about the service area being non-contiguous, that it's our zip codes and Williams zip codes. HUD's attorneys has, have said that that is not a problem. We are located in the same county, which means we're under the same fair market rent levels, et cetera. Um, and so we've, we've been going back and forth with them, making sure that our program is in the best position to accept this. If our staff, um, my boss, deputy city manager, et cetera, were not in a position of feeling that the risk on this for us is low, very low, especially since we can make the acceptance contingent on being held fully harmless, um, we're comfortable bringing this forward for consideration. I know that it's not simple. I covered a ton of information. Um, but we're ready. Our team is here to um, receive questions, thoughts, feedback. And again, the summary is, we've been asked to do this. It's important that folks understand that we're not hostilely taking over a program. We're not working on growing our empire. It's none of those things. They came to us and asked us to do this. This is not the first time we've been asked to take a program. We've been asked to take programs from other communities as well, including Williams in the past. Um, never have I been able to get it this far because of uh, the things that I've specified we need in order to protect our programs in moving forward. HUD has answered the things I've said that we need. Um, and it's not just me, but that our staff has identified that must happen in order for this to be um, viable financially and programmatically for us to do. Um, in the past HUD has said, well, we can't hold you harmless. We're like, okay, well, then we're done. Like, there's no further discussion. Um, but in this case, that, that has significantly changed. In the past, when we've been asked to take a program, um, there has not been the level of transparency regarding the finances that there has been in this situation, and that has also shut down discussions. Um, and sometimes the requests have been associated with public housing, which would have, which not would have, has way more things to consider because there's physical structures and all kinds of things. So a voucher program was the simpler one. Um, and we've worked to anticipate what are the risks are. Can we mitigate them? Can we not mitigate them? And figured out, I think we can mitigate them. Um, and we have a commitment from HUD that at a minimum, they will request what we need. Okeydokey, Chair, turn it back over to you for um, thoughts, questions, feedback.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Um, if board members have questions, please raise your hand in the app, and we will go with Nadine first.
So, you know, as a voucher holder, my heart says yes, but from my experience, I, my mind and my experience say no, because we still do not have that. The landlords I've spoken to, um, because of the way the housing authority deals with inspections and things like that, it's too difficult to maintain. So they know, the, they don't, no longer want to do it. So um, in the event my landlord drops out and he does not want to, now I have to compete with fifty more vouchers in Williams. And honestly, the thing about Williams is the people I know that work there and live there, it's because they were, they were able to afford to buy and purchase a house. Um, and I under, and, and that's why they're there. If I was a voucher holder there and I was struggling like they are, I'd definitely come up to Flagstaff, because now I have housing, more options at employment. So I get it, but I don't, I don't agree with it, un- unless you guys have some kind of contingency plan in place to help existing voucher holders find housing, and that has not happened for me.
Thank you for sharing that concern. What I rely on as well, in addition to your feedback, is that our utilization rate being at ninety-seven percent is that folks are having success in leasing up. And so if our, if folks were not having the success that they are in leasing up, and I'm not saying it's simple. I am not saying that it is simple. I'm saying that it is possible in our community. Um, we've had an increase in our participating landlords, a, a significant one in our participating landlords with the process. Our other pieces that are fair market rents are finally matching closer to what, um, again, fair market rent is what the voucher is worth to actual market conditions. I think that has led to an increase in landlord participation. Uh, Ms. Hart, I hear you. I am very familiar with your personal experience, and I'm not in any way negating that. Um, that is, is your personal experience. We have lots of other voucher holders at a ninety-seven percent utilization rate that show that we do have housing units. Actually, our vacancy rate in the community is higher than it's been, than we've really seen in our community in a long time. Our vacancy rate is six point seven six percent um, in market rate rental complexes. And so um, we knew that that was anec- we anecdotally knew that that was true with the vacancy rate because we're seeing move-in specials or newly remodeled units, that type of banners and advertising going up that doesn't happen in a market um, that has a very low vacancy rate. And so we're seeing the softening of our rental market. The statistic I'm quoting is actually from a rental attainability report published by Housing Solutions, where they call and survey, they called and surveyed fifty-six market rate complexes encompassing ten thousand three hundred and eighty-one units and ten income-restricted complexes for another uh, seven hundred and twenty-four units um, within a, a, a limited time period in the fall. And um, that's the vacancy rate number. That number is also consistent with what we're hearing from folks seeking to develop additional units within our community. So again, in no way negating your personal experience, we have data showing that, that things are changing. Um, and that increasing the service area for over two Williams, again, their rental stock is not, like, it's everywhere, but it does give folks some additional options. We've had folks that, that want to live in Williams. We have folks that have, that are voucher holders in Williams that have asked to port over here. We can't port them because there's not a program really sending them. There's no staff. They can't pay us. Um, so we've had interest in exchange of, but from voucher holders in, in moving in both directions. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, Tatum.
Thank you. Um, I have a few questions, and I think I also wanted to add on to something that Nadine said about how it is stressful to think that there'd be more vouchers available here in Flagstaff in terms of like housing availability, but I appreciate you making those points that um, things are happening. Like, I know an apartment complex just opened near me, and it's a low-income apartment complex. And now I have a bunch of new neighbors, and that's so exciting. Um, and so that's been phenomenal. So it's, I've seen movement as well. Um, but I think part of that is the concern of like, well, what if there's fewer units available if something were to happen? I don't know, one of us or to someone else that we know. Um, and I think that that's not really how we should be operating, like housing should be available to everybody, and it shouldn't be based on like our own concern for ourselves. Um, because it is a stressful thing, and like, I, I rent as well. I can't afford to own here either. Um, and it is stressful to think that at any time that your housing could be gone. Um, and I think that a lot of us have different life experiences, but that doesn't mean that we should make it difficult for other people to. I think that as the Housing Authority Board, we should be opening as many doors as humanly possible to continue to help our community grow and flourish, because the reality is people are coming to Flagstaff, and that's okay. Um, and we want to support to have a stable housing community in general. Um, and I had some specific questions for you, Sarah, about some of the things you presented on. You had mentioned that we are in Williams being used right now. It sounded like there was kind of between like a couple of numbers. Is that accurate?
Tatum, you cut out for just a second, and I missed the beginning of the question.
Oh, yeah, you had mentioned that there was um, a certain number of vouchers being utilized in Williams currently. Do we know exactly how many households there are, or are we missing some files?
So we have not formally accepted file transfer. I did not want the legal responsibility associated with the file transfer. And again, there hasn't been staff there. The city manager and the mayor have been working to do what they can, but they're not housers. And so um, they're not always fully aware of what they're looking at. If it's a, what does it mean if there was a voucher surrendered, and is that an active file? Is it not? HUD is gone um, with Office of Auditor General and looked through some of the files. They transferred us some limited information. Um, however, in looking, and copies of limited information. Um, in looking through it, I don't want to say they weren't fully familiar with what a file transfer would look like, but it's, it's scattershot. We would need a formal file transfer. The number that we're functioning with is between eighteen and twenty-two currently utilized vouchers. Again, without staff, nobody has been uploading into the, the portals that would give us the actual data. Um, however, in talking to uh, the mayor and city manager who have been going to the bank and having checks cut for landlords, um, that's, the number is based on what we know was true in April of twenty-four, and that number was around twenty-five. We know that there has been a voluntary surrender. And then the piece that is We know that there has been a voluntary surrender and then the piece that is, is why I can't give you a solid number is because there are landlords that are leasing to more than one voucher holder. And so the city of Williams is, is issuing half checks in the amount that they were issued previously without knowing if that landlord is leasing to, to one, two, three voucher holders. So there's some, some pieces in there. The number is absolutely under twenty-five. I have not seen a utilization number in excess of twenty-five on the books for them in the past multiple years that we've been able to look back at. It's that current piece that staff left where we're having a hard time specifically defining the pinpoint number.
That makes sense. So in my next question, you may or may not be able to answer based on that, is do we know if these units are up to code? Um, I know that in my work in Williams that a lot of folks live off the grid or maybe have like different sources of water or heating. And so I just wanted to know if we happen to have been given any information about like, are folks using utilities or are they doing wood burning stoves or what does that look like?
Great question. Um, we had the same question. And so were we given information? No, but did we go digging? Yeah. And so um, there's a reason that their service area has been limited to their city limits and that is water. Um, they did not, previous staff, um, there is a way to calculate if someone, utility assistant, not assistance, utility allowance. If someone's hauling water, it's not super simple. They limited their service area to the areas covered by municipal water systems. And so that is one thing when we went, oh, okay, so we're not dealing with the spread out pieces. Um, when I, when this initially came to us and I thought, oh my gosh, do they go up to valley? Does it go up the highway? How far out does it go? It's only proper city limits, which addresses the, the water concern. I have spoken with several times with the, the previous director, um, and units were current when she left, which means inspections were completed, um, which means certifications were done, et cetera. And so as of September twenty twenty-three, all of the units passed inspection. Have things changed since then? I don't know. We would have to re-inspect. Um, do I anticipate them necessarily changing a bunch? And this is purely a personal sense of mine. The landlords that have stuck with this, without staff to work with, without folks to refer people to questions to, other than the mayor and the city manager in Williams, are landlords that are interested in, in being in the program. And so I don't, I think if you were being negligent and this has for them been a pain in the rear, um, they, they wouldn't have stuck with it. They would have terminated leases and that is not the experience we've seen with perhaps the exception of one household. But again, we're not privy to all of that information. We're functioning off somewhat that what the household has told us, what HUD has told us. And so, but it's, it's not that landlords started immediately terminating leases, which to me indicates landlords that are caring, one, about the human side, but two, I anticipate that carrying over somewhat to the properties at a minimum. And that the time period since the last inspection um, is under two years. And so it's not, we're not walking into units that haven't been observed for five years along those lines.
Right, got it. Um, and then one more question and then a comment. Um, my next question is for the process of hiring someone. Would it be like a situation where if we were to take this on, would we hire first and then transition in? Would we try and do it all at the same time? Do you all feel like that's something that could happen in the like same timeline of events?
Swear I put that on a slide because I had to look up the word preemptively.
I might have missed it.
No, I'm, I'm not sure I said it. I think my brain just went, we've preemptively requested staff for a position to be added through the budget process. Um, I'm pulling those out of-
What's your hiring timeframe right now for other staff?
Megan?
How long did it take you to hire the last person you hired?
Oh, well, things have been picking up in that arena and it's been moving fairly, fairly quickly. Um, all at the same time with the piece of initiating the staff request now. Because we can show that we can afford it, we don't have to stay within the July one at a staff person timeline. And so as soon as this is, um, we actually need the staff person regardless. And so I've preemptively requested this, the addition of the staff person. Um, I am meeting with the next three levels of the powers that be in my world, um, at the beginning of week after next, um, in order to discuss specific numbers, needs, et cetera. And so one, we're already starting on the staffing because we know it can take more time to hire. We've had a changed, um, condition in, in hiring. And I know there are others of you on here that are familiar with this. Uh, during pandemic, after pandemic, uh, we were in a hiring situation where we were going out multiple times to find qualified folks, where hiring time periods were lengthy and sometimes our conversation was, well, we can train, we, we got it. Our last two significant hiring processes, our last three significant hiring processes, we've had more than one person we would hire. We've had to make a decision, not like, oh, well, clearly there's just one. We've had to make a decision and weigh pros and cons of like, okay, do we go for experience? Do we go for this? Do we go for that? And so I've been talking with my colleagues within the organization as well and some other housing authorities and they're seeing a similar change in the number and quality of applicants that, that they're getting. I'm gonna knock again on my desk that that continues. Um, hiring timeline, um, my intent is to have a staff person in place before the transfer is complete. And if not before the transfer is complete, then before we tackle intensely the file cleanup. Is that we just can't, our staff is phenomenal. They work their rear ends off. Um, and I'm not comfortable adding a significant additional workload without that staff in place. I know that's not like a, and here's how we're going to do it answer, because there's a lot of moving parts and pieces to it. But I made a commitment to Sharice and her team that, um, we wouldn't do this without providing additional support in that program. I've also found a service that, um, provides temporary employees that are housing specific. So you, we can, I have found a way to get a temporary housing services specialist that's already trained to carry some of the load. And so that's another release valve we've identified um, as a, as a potential asset so that our staff is not absorbing uh, even more of workload than they have right now.
Got it. That, that answers my question, actually. Um, and then my last thing is a comment and I'm just really glad to hear that if this does happen, that HUD is helping with that transfer. Uh, that's a, that's such a significant thing to me to hear. Um, as like, I, in my personal experience in working in housing nonprofit and having to absorb other programs for fear of like those people losing their housing and a bunch of vulnerable people not having access to their housing anymore because someone else mismanaged their, their funding and having to just absorb a program. It's so hard to navigate when someone else wasn't doing their due diligence and to fix all those issues and to have guidance and to have that help from the source. I like, can't even explain, like happy, that makes my heart to hear because that's such good protection for everybody involved, like the clients and you all, and just to help the process to make sure that everything goes well and everything is held accountable is just like such a phenomenal thing to hear. And I'm so glad to hear that that's part of the negotiations. And my speech is over.
No, we were too. And that was one of the very first things I said when they proposed this idea was mm-mm, like yes, we've been down this road several times. Here's where it's died every time. And if you can answer these things, then we're up for discussion. And they actually brought forward um, yeses, of course, not in writing, but verbal, took forever to get them in writing. Um, but, but verbal yeses to the, our very big upfront concerns within two, two business weeks, ten business days. They're like, nope, we've discussed it. This needs to happen. And so it, it is quite significant and it's quite unusual. Um, except in situations where the program like, they're gonna lose the resource in their community if, if this doesn't happen. And so I think HUD is, is paying attention to that as well. I also, um, would be remiss if I didn't point out that, that HUD holds the bag on some of this too. It's not that the city of Williams was, you know, renegade and completely out on their own doing things. HUD has a oversight responsibility. And I can tell you, if, if we are, you know, if our, our reports are not turned in two days early. So we have a report that's due monthly on the twenty-second. On the seventeenth, we get an email if we haven't done it yet. And we're like, we, we have some time, like yes, we're on it. We will get there, but we still have time. And so HUD bears some responsibility here for the condition that this program reached. And I think that's the other reason that we're seeing additional cooperation from HUD. Um, I've worked very hard not to toss anybody or any program under a bus, but rather just to reflect conditions. And so HUD has responsibility here as does Williams.
That makes complete sense to me.
Thank you, Tatum. Nadine, your hand is up.
Yes, so I do not agree with Tatum. And Sarah, you keep saying we're talking about human beings and leaning for the heart. Um, and you, you, you talk about people finding housing. But depending on when your lease is up at different times of year, after students have found housing and a lot of the housing that they do find and is fair market housing, yeah, you're gonna have absolutely no problem. And depending on the size of unit you're required to have, it is more challenging. So this whole thing about, oh, we need to house human beings. I would like, and I request each one of you, if you think it is so easy, you work full-time, you have responsibilities, to start calling and seeing the rejection. I do think that it's great that, um, there are, there is no, city council worked hard to get that income. Um, you, you can't discriminate by income on, when you're applying for housing. But, um, I do think that the income is the income and that voucher holders, if they can afford it within their voucher limits, should be able to rent whichever unit they want to. The biggest thing, and Sharice was awesome showing me how simple it is for them to sign on, is, um, the, the tons of inspections that occur. People I talked to, you, you have to understand, Housing Solutions can afford to change out a water heater. A private landlord, um, who's trying to do something good may not have those resources. You know, so that's not an issue for keeping landlords. And what bothers me is you keep saying over and over, how many landlords want to rent to voucher holders? But the voucher holders, and this is, I do resent that you're saying this is individual experience because it is absolutely not. I have people reaching out to me all over the community. So I resent, um, on the record that you're suggesting that my experience is individualistic. It is not. Um, it is hard. So if there are all these landlords working with, um, these clients, how come the housing authority isn't applying, like providing a list um, to people as they come available? Because people leave, things come up. Um, I have never seen that. Your resources are so outdated. I mean, what, I got my voucher in what, two thousand nineteen maybe? The same resources from the same apartment complexes. That's what bothers me. And Tatum's like, oh, well, let's just have everybody come up here and have housing. Well, let's make sure we have housing for every single voucher holder, um, in Flagstaff. And you guys can disagree with me all the time. You could say fact data, fact data, fact data. But the people I talked to are struggling. And so fifty more vouchers is going to be very difficult. I can only agree if we're gonna um, provide resources for existing housing vouchers. And you, the thing I cannot tell you enough. If I, my voucher's up in January, I'm gonna find a lot more opportunities because there's a lot of students who are graduating in January. There's a lot of people leaving and there's a lot of landlords who want to fill that unit so they can have a consistent amount of rent. My chances are higher. My lease is up in October. There's a lot of people in November. There's a lot of people that have leases up in September or August. It is impossible. Because, uh, the students that I've spoken to, like, hey, I'll pay you an extra thousand dollars because I'm gonna have roommates. There goes that opportunity for a voucher holder. This is the reality. And I really just, it, it's just, it puts me in a fury when we keep saying we're talking about human beings. Because you're ignoring the human beings who are struggling in the program as it stands. And again, if you guys do not believe me, I would like every one of you who work, because a lot of us work, to start asking and calling around every single rent. Go to, go to Zillow, go to these apartments if you think it is so easy. Because it's not.
Thank you for your comment. I, it's not easy. We're not saying that it is easy and I did, I I apologize that you took my comment about it being just you. That is not what I'm saying. I'm saying that the, that, that it is individualized. The different folks have different experiences um, in, in searching and in finding housing units. And so I hear you. It is not as simple as one would hope that it is. What I'm saying is that we have made a number of actions to, we've taken a number of actions in working to build in upfront before complexes even built, that they will accept housing choice vouchers, that they will not discriminate on behalf of, on, on the basis of income. That's not a blanket community-wide policy. The state says we can't do that, but we've been able to negotiate it into development agreements for coming units. And so I hear you. We've talked about your personal experience before. I'm not saying it's simple. I'm saying that we have a, a high success rate. In fact, our success rate of lease-up for vouchers is, is higher than most agencies, especially for a community our size. And that, um, we have additional units coming into the community and an additional opportunity for folks to rent in Williams, should that be their choice. And so I hear you. I have made a note of your concerns.
But Sarah, but Sarah, I have been to city council meetings where they negotiate like this. And they are willing to offer these units for a set amount of time, these new developments that everyone's excited. I saw the housing plan. I think it was really long-winded and very, uh, it, it just, it was crazy. But there, but do you have a guarantee that this is an indefinite commitment? Because a lot of, I've heard a lot of things like up to thirty years. And then after thirty years, they can do whatever. So you've just lost that affordable housing after thirty years. Do you, are you gonna tell the board for a fact that these new developments who are willing to do low income, income contingent, and even accept a, a certain, a certain amount of vouchers, not all across the board? Are you saying that that is guaranteed housing for effect?
We're working with private developers. Useful lives of rental units is limited. The typical number within, um, the industry is that units would be affordable for fifteen years. That, within the tax credit industry, that's the number. In Arizona, and we were some of the first to push this to, to double that to thirty years. I get that it's not in perpetuity. Some of the units are in perpetuity. The units being developed by Habitat, the units being developed by, um, Housing Solutions, the units being converted by Flag Shelter Services, the ones that are nonprofit affiliated have no problem making the indefinite commitment. Our most recent negotiation success, um, is a period of sixty years of compliance with affordability. Um, that's almost unheard of. Um, we have other communities call and say, you got sixty years? How'd you do that? They came to the table when we said, well, how do you feel about extending that? They're like, well, we can do X. And so this is a negotiation and a development process. And again, this is Arizona. We cannot require, we legally cannot make developers do it. Um, we are, we have an incentive policy to incentivize them to do it. Um, we have a strong negotiations team that talks about our community needs. And so the, if we said it has to be forever, um, or we're not game, then, um, we would not be successful with the bulk of the negotiations. So I hear you. Do I wish they were all permanently affordable? So I hear you. Do I wish they were all permanently affordable? Absolutely. Um, but we also recognize that we're working with with the private development community in in a capitalistic system. And so we're we're doing our best to secure as many units as possible for as long as possible without tying ourselves in legal knots by trying to require people to do it. I I've noted your comments. Um, uh, I have notes from Tatum. And Sheriff, I may, do you mind if I ask if others have any feedback, questions, or input?
Nope, that's fine. Um, I have a bunch, but I want every, all the other members of the commission to have their questions and comments heard first. So Ashley, do you have any? I don't want to call people out. I'm sorry about that. If anybody else on the board has um questions or comments, please raise your hand. Okay, so I have a pile of them, Sarah. Um, a couple of them are um more administrative, but there are a couple that I'd like to ask first. So do you have an idea um of what the landlord willingness to participate in vouchers rate is within the city of Flagstaffs or within our housing authorities um domain as it exists today? I think we've danced around that number, but I don't know if I have a specific. Like, you know, we have, I don't know how many, I'm gonna throw a total non-realistic number out. We have thirty thousand landlords. How many of them are willing to participate in in the voucher system? Do we have an idea of what that number is?
I'm going to start talking and um see if Charisse unmutes and has some feedback specific to that. I can tell you it's difficult to pin down um a specific piece because of the number of folks that rent single-family homes that are difficult to quantify. There used to be an independent renters council that we could go and speak with. And that was um folks who had between one and four units for rent. And so when we talk about the universe of landlords, it is typically, actually, Charisse, I think I have the statistic in front of me. Um, when we're talking about landlords, we typically um are only talking about the larger complexes with, when we're talking about a statistic like that, because it is difficult to access the number of uh the independent, the independent landlords. I am looking at a report to see if this number is on here.
If I may add while you are looking, I don't there is not a specific number, and that's not something we track, just because it's hit and miss. We may get all of a sudden one landlord who says, hey, I want to try this out. And then if it's successful, they, you know, they've chosen a a great um tenant, then they'll come back and say, I have two more houses or two more units. And again, this is all in the private sector. Um, you know, and then you may have just one landlord who's been on the program forever with one house that, you know, people move in and move out, and they're good with that. So to tie down exactly what that number is in private market is um is is a lot more difficult to track. And then apartment complexes, well, most of like our Bella properties, um they have eight apartment complexes in our community where they offer eight percent of their units are set aside for uh voucher holders. And so that is, that's kind of easier um to track. Um, just because if there's, you know, a hundred and fifteen units and eight percent of those are are held for low-income public how, or for, sorry, for for housing choice voucher, that's easier to track. So um, you know, and then we also have other low-income units or apartment complexes, like the ones that just opened up, and then ones that aren't, you know, subjected to have to provide those units because maybe they're um you know, their time to provide that, uh, those units has expired, but they're still willing to provide those units. And so again, this is apartment complexes. So it just really depends on um what actual, what the actual numbers are. I don't know, Sheriff, if you found anything, but that's just kind of what I've seen in the last ten years.
Okay, thank you, Charisse. Thank you, Sarah. Um, this might be something, I'll talk to Davana about adding this to the housing attainability, asking about whether or not the landlords are, that's what you have in front of you. I didn't see it, but I I also don't have it in front of me at the moment. So it's not something I'm certain of, but it might be something that we can add to the questionnaire for next year. Um, just to get an idea.
I think it's something that was asked in the past for sure. Um, we have uh one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three units um specifically for low-income renters in Flagstaff. We need to to minus out the three hundred and forty-five um public housing units out of that. Um, but for example, we have um the units that the city's negotiated into market rate complexes, which this says a hundred and sixty-eight. That number has gone up, but they're not built yet. We have seven hundred and twenty-four low-income housing tax credit units. That doesn't count the new units opening on Lake Mary. Um, Housing Solutions has some additional units and is in the development process of eleven more. Um, Catholic Charities looks like at this point is at forty-one, but I know is also growing their inventory. And so I know some of these numbers feel very low, but everyone matters and and it adds up over time. Tracy just came in and handed me a note that said currently we're working with a hundred and seven different landlords in the community.
Okay. Um, and and more, the point of my question was less about the specific numbers and more about the willingness and 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 knowledge of the system within the landlord uh community. And so one of the places I was going with that kind of question is um maybe a, I know we've done it in the past, and maybe we can do it in the future, a sort of educational kind of outreach to landlords about this is the program. Here's, here's the benefits of, for you. Here's the costs to you um as a landlord. Um, but here's the sort of system that works. And one of the reasons I'd like to see that happen again is um I I believe there are more willing landlords than we know about, but they don't know how to get started, and they don't know how to participate. And so an educational program like that, that happens once or twice a year would be helpful, I think, not only to the landlords, but also to um CFHA to understand what the landlords expect or think or know about the program and how to improve it um over time. So um, that was one question. Um, the next question I have is if we're at a ninety-seven percent utilization rate with the vouchers, um, why, why aren't we at a hundred percent is the first part of this question. What's, what's holding that three percent back? Um, and is that three percent similar to the the twenty to thirty new vouchers? Are they going to be held back in the same way? Or what's going on with the three percent? And how is that related, maybe at all, not at all, to the ones from Williams if we were to take those on? Does that question even come close to making any sense? I jumbled it in my mind.
Well, good, because then if my answer's jumbled, you'll understand it. No, and this is what I was talking about in the presentation of um the Balancing Act of of HAP with other things. That's why you will see sometimes a lower utilization rate with other programs. It's an ebb and flow piece. To hit a perfect hundred, I I don't think it's is necessarily possible. In in reviewing um then the end of November, there it is. Maybe, VMS report, we had some um tenants pass away. We had some voluntarily move out of the, I'm looking. Um, yes, we had some deaths of current voucher holders. We had um some folks with lease violations who were evicted. Um, we had, let's see, uh, some voluntary surrenders. Um, folks either moving out of the community or their income is now high enough where they don't qualify. Or there's a number of reasons we see for voluntary surrenders as well. And so that three percent play is actually a really low number, a really pers, a low percentages percentage of play within it because it is a number of, okay, well, do we, do we issue more than we have so that we try to stay at that hundred percent? But if we over-issue, we're in violation um and can be downgraded in our scores for being over-leased, um, which could mean we don't have enough money to cover what we have. So it's this I was thinking last night of looking for a graphic of like a teeter totter where we're working to balance and and within the, so the report that that I'm looking at, it's the, it's what happened within a thirty-day time period where we did have deceased tenants and leased, leased violations, et cetera. So that's, does that help answer your question?
It does. So essentially, what I'm getting from that is there's something like a thirty-day time lag between when a voucher is surrendered to the next time it can be utilized because of all the things that that are happening within the program. Is that, is that an accurate understanding?
I wouldn't say it's a thirty-day time lag. It's the thirty day and the, that's our reporting time period. So that's what I'm looking at as a thirty-day snapshot. But for example, in in November, so um the the end of December numbers are almost finalized, which is why I'm using end of November is because they are finalized. Is that we sent two hundred and fifty records requests to the top two hundred and fifty households on the waiting list. We received about seventy-five of those back. And so then our occupancy staff starts processing, scheduling, eligibility interviews. Um, sometimes folks uh claim the local preference, that then they are not actually local, so they fall out that way, that type of thing. And so um we had a briefing, I want to say this week. There was a briefing in late December. There's one in mid-January for households that are determined eligible. Um, and so it's that, it's that piece of incoming, getting folks prepped. Do they actually income qualify? Are they over-income? Uh, do they meet the other criteria, et cetera? And so it's a, it's a constant churning cycle. And as a voucher is, comes in, so I'm gonna go to an experience and switch it a little bit. When we're granted new vouchers, um like the uh, let's say mainstream, mainstream vouchers, we are given a lease-up time period. We usually ask for twelve to eighteen months to get those fully utilized. And so, and that stems from somewhat of like, we send out two hundred and fifty records requests saying, hey, you're at the top of the waiting list. We get about seventy-five back. So it takes time to identify households coming in. And so we would do something similar with this. In being programmatically held harmless, we will request a lease-up time period for those vouchers that isn't damaging to our overall, our overall performance and numbers, so that we do have reasonable time to get them integrated, issued, and leased up. Does that?
Okay, it it it, I think it does. Essentially, to me, there's some percentage of vouchers that are e- either new or being transferred or or returned or whatever. And so you can't ever realistically have a hundred percent utilization rate because people are moving, things are happening, administrative time takes time to have, you know, all of these things are keeping you from ever being for more than a month at a hundred percent utilization rate. And realistically, we should expect somewhere around ninety to ninety-five percent um utilization. And that's, that's just reality. And so adding another twenty to thirty vouchers um may bring that utilization rate down um in the first n months, but at some point, we could realistically expect us to be back up to the ninety-five-ish, ninety-ish percent rate relatively quickly. Is that, is that an accurate statement or hope, accurately hopeful statement?
It it is an accurately hopeful statement. I think the only way we would see a hundred percent consistent utilization is if we were over-leased. And that's not a situation that we want to be in because we we don't. We wouldn't, we wouldn't be receiving income to support the leasing of those vouchers. And so it is a constant churn. And sometimes the utilization rate is lower depending on what's happening in the market, and sometimes it's higher. We have been consistently within the ninety percent um for a significantly long amount of time.
Okay. Nadine, you put a question in the in the chat. Would you like me to ask that question, or would you like to ask it?
You can ask it.
Okay, so um because the chat is not part of the public record, I'd like to ask Nadine's question. Um, is the Housing Authority able to extend the voucher boundaries within Coconino County? If so, it might open up a plethora of housing opportunities. Is that a HUD approval, or does the FHA have that option?
Um, it's a mix of both. One, opening it up to the entire county, given the geographic size of the county, is not realistically viable. And so to open it up to a portion, um, we are already serving Flagstaff and all of its surrounding areas. So um Mount Air, Kachina, Doni Park, et cetera, all the areas immediately contiguous to town are not even immediately contiguous because there's space between here and there um are within our service area. We've been asked in the past to take uh the program in in Winslow, and that is a different somewhat consideration. One, they're leased all over eastern Arizona. Um, and two, it's, it's it's a, it's a greater distance for staff to travel and and be present to service vouchers in the community. I don't know how much further we could open up um within the county. Further question, why not viable? Can you explain why it's not viable? Is it due to travel time for inspections? Um, it's due to travel time and resources overall. So we don't get an additional amount of money if a voucher is located a greater distance from where we're centrally located. And so um is it due to travel time for inspections? That's a small piece of it. But it's also the viability for the client in or to be able to come to us if need be. Um, or for us to go to to them. We have long explored opportunities with Coconino County of like, what does make sense? We have the F and P O boundary, which incorporates our surrounding areas that we're already serving much beyond those areas until we reach other communities. There's not, um I don't have it open, um, but we can um the zip code map of eight six oh oh one oh five, of course, is the area south of um I forty and oh oh four encompasses the the housing within and around our community. Going out much further than that um becomes burdensome for both our program financially and also for clients. If that's something the board is interested in, um, we could, we could seek that. But again, HUD had to put in, um, had, HUD had to incorporate their attorneys from headquarters in order to even consider, considering William, consider, considering um for it to be viable for Williams to be part of our service area. So it's a two-pronged answer. One, we have some say, and two, HUD really has the final say. Their initial answer was no. Um, and then Phoenix Office and Regional went back and said, let's look at the dynamics, and then the answer was yes. So um, is it possible then? It just hasn't been tried or seriously considered. Most residents do work in Flagstaff, so they're available to make an appointment and come into the office. It has been seriously considered. Um, however, we are the city of Flagstaff, and it is our responsibility first and foremost to serve our community. Um, it's and when I said it's possible, it is a possible discussion. Again, HUD would have to approve, and they weren't initially even open to the Williams piece until their own staff explained why, in this instance, it makes, it makes sense. And as far as working in Flagstaff, um, Nadine, could you? What are you envisioning? Are you envisioning out to Winslow? Because our surrounding areas, we're already serving.
Um, I just a little bit broader. Kachina Village, do we, do we service there?
We absolutely do. Yep.
Muntz Park?
Yep. Let me look. Oh, Caleb put a link in. I'm pulling it up, and I can share it.
It is the zip code map, yes.
But like, um, I know there's a lot of people, surprising amount of people who come up from like even Ash Fork. We couldn't extend to that or other region. I mean, I've talked to some of the county um supervisors about this, and and that's one of the things that they were wanting the Housing Authority to consider is opening up the vouchers to the vouchers to areas. And that would be a discussion that I think would be important to have with one of our county supervisors, especially Coronimo. He has some really good ideas to better understand what, what he is thinking, what would help those people. And, and I also think like, um, the ability to find affordable or below market value with what our Flagstaff vouchers are would almost be a benefit to that budget that you spoke to earlier. Assuming that people cannot get in into town should not be the discriminating factor for not considering this idea a- as well as travel time. Again, if you, um, if you extend the inspection time, you only have once every two years to inspect these homes. So you make it easier for staff to get out of the out to these areas and in considering hiring another staff. It really shouldn't be a, a set no. I really think as a board, we should consider it and maybe talk to some of our supervisors to see what the, the county's needs are and, and work with them on this. That, that's what I'm thinking.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that perspective. The larger we make our area, the larger the amount of need that we're working within. So there are, it's, it's complex. We can, we can look at it, but it is also HUD dedicates resources to, to specific communities with the capacity to administer them. The funding that comes with these, um, we're in a good place because of, of the way we have managed our budgets over time. And it is not only based on, on inspections. It's based on a number of factors. If that's a discussion that the board is open to having or is interested in, we can bring additional statistics. We can bring additional, um, the HUD regulations and how that works. It is not something that we have prepared to discuss today.
Sarah, would you mind, um, adding that to a future agenda to discuss what the costs are, what the current boundaries of CFHA's voucher program extends to, what the whole authority extends to rather. What the, the related costs, administrative costs are for a local to Flagstaff within city of Flagstaff's boundaries versus what it is to deal with a voucher that's held in say, Mount Air or whatever the largest distance from the center of Flagstaff is. What are the differences in costs? If there's something that you can actually calculate there, I don't know. I had a question about what, um, our current per voucher administrative costs are, but that's going to be an average rather than more specific to geography and things like that. And I don't know if you'll be able to, but if you are able to estimate what the ge- geography-based administrative costs are, that would be something that would be helpful to understand. Does that, is that something that I'm, the, the way I'm asking it, does that make sense to?
It does make sense. The piece that as staff that will look at first before going down the road of estimating cost is what is our functional regulatory ability to do so?
Yeah, yeah. That was the next question was, what does HUD allow you to do?
Yes. Because it is not just we want to. It's, it's, it's complex. And I know that's an unsatisfactory answer, but there is a lot of things that go into these and it's not something we've prepared for discussion today. So I hear you. I hear your request and, um, we'll work in that direction to help the board better understand what that looks like. Sharice has informed me that I misspoke. And that we do not, our, our boundaries do not go out to parks. Sharice, will you go over areas that our boundaries do encompass, please?
Yeah, as of current, we go out as far as Kachina, Mount Air. Don't, we do not service pass mountain the west side of town. Like out towards Gore, where Gore is, like we don't service past that area. We go out as far as Baderville. Um, and then we do go out as far as Timberline. Going north, so, or north and north. That's as far as we.
I think it would be
We do do Doni Park. I'm sorry. We do do Doni and then out towards Winona. Some parts of Loop before it gets into, um, Navajo County.
Okay.
Or the reservation.
We can provide a map during the
Yeah, that would be helpful to understand. Cause you, you gave, you gave a range of zip codes and it didn't quite match up with my understanding of the zip code map. Like we have eight six zero one five here in Flagstaff. Is that not part of the oh one to oh five that you had mentioned earlier? And that sort of thing. So it, it'd be helpful to get that full map and, and understand what our current, um, sort of authority. And then what HUD says is allowable within those confines. Cause I, I suspect that HUD is going to restrict our ability to work within other incorporated areas without some number of, of these kinds of agreements being distributed. And so it'd be interested, interesting to see what it is that HUD restricts versus what it is that, uh, we already do versus what might be helpful in the future.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. There are zip codes that are included in there, but there are, there are zip codes and then there are functional zip codes with housing. For example, there are two zip codes in town that are only relevant to PO boxes. And we don't typically tell folks, hey, go rent in this because they're like, well, where is it? Well, it's a PO box number. And so there's one specific to NAU, that type of thing. And so we can bring that breakdown in that map, absolutely. The other piece is, is being careful not to try to become all things to all people.
Yes.
Which jeopardizes our, our base mission of serving our community. I was comfortable bringing forward the Williams piece because of its, its, um, close proximity because of the limited scope of what we're being asked to, to do. And also the, the number of vouchers that, um, would provide additional opportunity for residents within our community. And so that's why it felt, and this is something we wrestled with the staff. What does it look like? How does it functionally work? Williams was a distance that, that made some sense. We could schedule inspections in a cluster. So we're not sending somebody over every other day except for move-ins or move-outs, that type of thing. So we will, um, bring forward some information regarding our, our civet, our, our service area.
As part of that, Sarah, could I also ask that, um, if it's at all possible, and I have no idea if it is, that you also look at what the, um, potential for additional requests for vouchers would be if you extended the area? Cause I don't think you get to extend to additional units without also extending to additional potential people who need housing in those areas. Is that correct? Does that make any sense, the question I'm asking?
It does. And the answer is simple. There are not additional vouchers associated with
Not vouchers, but additional people. I'm, I mean, if you go, if you extend to Belmont for units, do you also have to extend to Belmont? The people who live in Belmont who might want to utilize the vouchers? Is, is, right. So people can, can, I think we're about to lose quorum because
We are about to lose quorum. Thank you, everybody for staying over.
Tatum, um, to ask your question and then I think we're going to have to end so that we don't lose quorum or so that we can, when we lose quorum. Go ahead, Tatum.
Thank you. Yep. Real quick, I just wanted to mention that, um, the, like the Williams situation has a lot more circumstance around it versus like considering expanding outward. And I fully agree that we should be focusing inward on continuing to sustain the community that we have and the fact that there's like a very specific circumstance that's happening in Williams and it is nearby and easier to work with. And other conversations about like Winslow and Ash Fork, they're not even in Coconino County. Like we don't have responsibility to serve the entire county, let alone outside of, outside of county lines. And so I just think that's not really a relevant discussion that we need to use our very limited time on. It already takes us some time to get through conversations like this. And so I think that it's not a good use of our time and we should be focusing more on this Williams very specific situation.
Okay, um, we are at two hours after we started. Do you want, I don't think we really have time for general business, the rest of this. The agenda, is that something we can put off till next time? Or is that something we legally have to go through with the open meeting law?
It is not something that we can suspend the agenda at any point.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Um, can I get, if anyone is willing to, um, make a motion to suspend the rest of the, the rest of the agenda and in today's meeting?
I make a motion to suspend.
Thank you, Nadine. Do I have a second?
This is Tatum. All second.
Thank you, Tatum. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, with that, I think we are going to suspend the rest of today's agenda. And thank you all for your time. The meeting is ended for now. Uh, I do believe, Sarah, we will have more conversation and questions in the future about this. Is there a deadline that you have to make this decision?
There is not a hard and fast deadline. That, there is not a hard and fast deadline. But we do need to, it, it can't go on forever.
Okay. So, um, we don't need to have like an emergency meeting. We could put this off till next month or should we try to have another meeting? Before then.
I'm looking at the calendar. Our next meeting would take place on February Oh, that's fun. Given the scope of today's discussion, additional information, et cetera, I think we'll try to have a meeting before that if we can.
Okay. I'll, I'll let you and Caleb and the housing staff try to organize that and then hopefully we'll be able to get, uh, quorum to have that meeting. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Moses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, we are. One moment. And stop recording.